Good evening. I'm calling to order this meeting of the Arlington Select Board on Monday, April 28, 2025. I am Select Board Chair Diane Mahan. If I could ask my colleagues just to introduce themselves.
John Hurd.
Eric Helmut.
Leonard Diggins.
Steve DeCoursey.
Jim Feeny, Town Manager.
Michael Cunningham, Town Council.
Ashley Marr, Board Administrator.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format, consistent with provisions and state law for remote participation in public meetings. And please, before we begin, note the following. This meeting is being conducted, God bless you, in the Select Board chambers and over Zoom. It is being recorded and simultaneously broadcasted on ACMI. Thank you, ACMI. People wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. People participating either in person or by Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others and that if you wish to participate, we ask that you provide your full name and place of residence in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Both Zoom participants and persons watching on ACMI can follow the posted agenda materials found on the town's website, specifically the Select Board Agenda and Minutes page. If technical difficulties sever the remote connection to one or more participants and efforts to reconnect within a reasonable parity of time fail, the in-person meeting will continue at the discretion of the chair, provided that a quorum of the board is physically present. Zoom participants are encouraged to retain the phone number provided in their confirmation email for a backup audio connection to the meeting. And as Mr. DeCoursey has left me with a good phrase to say, let's see how much of the town's business we can get done tonight. We will now move to a gen— oh, before I start the meeting, and thank you, Mr. DeCoursey, one of our previous superintendent of schools, Kathleen K. Donovan, recently passed away. And she was such an intelligent, charismatic, change agent, superintendent of schools, that came into Arlington, eventually made it her home, eventually made all the students and staff her family, and just did a phenomenal job at Arlington High School with too many projects and programs to talk about. But she really was just so selfless. There was even an effort to rename something at the high school after her, and she put the start to that right away because she was never there for, you know, getting credit. She just wanted to get things done best for our town and our children. So she passed away recently, and I'd like to have a brief moment of silence for K. Donovan. Thank you all. Appreciate that. And thank you, Mr. DeCoursey, for reminding. And now we will move to Agenda Item Two, which is a trash collection update, and I'll turn it over to our most adept Town Manager, Mr. Feeny.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. And if I could invite Mr. Radamacher up to the microphone as well.
Thank you.
So as the board knows, and as we've been discussing sort of throughout this year's budget process, we are set to enter into our next five-year trash and recycling contract. And while a contract has not yet been finalized, I am pleased to report this evening that the town will be moving forward with waste management as our new hauler as of July 1st, 2025. And assuming we have a finalized contract by that date, you know, I've asked the Chair if we can have waste management appear at our next Select Board meeting in May to discuss their customer service levels, procedures, and anything else the board may find of interest. So with regard to the new program, as we talked about at our April 7th meeting, will involve containerization, but it will have a series of other programmatic changes. We are putting the finishing touches on a frequently asked questions document for the town's website, as well as a mailer that we will be sending out to each and every household in the community, letting them know that carts are indeed coming and where to get additional information about the program. But without further ado, we've got just a brief overview of some of these programmatic changes that are forthcoming, that we wanted to review this evening. So we will discuss yard waste and Christmas tree collection. The schedule, as noted previously, will be reduced from years past, and we can show a draft schedule a little bit later. A fee structure update for bulky and waste ban items. As it stands currently, bulky burnable items, we are allowed to dispose of one item a week without a cost. That will be changing as of July 1st. We have some preliminary pricing for what the overflow recycling and trash options will be. An update on the commercial collection program, which will also be moving towards containerization, as is the residential collection program. And a brief initial discussion on potential for cart downsizing options. And I'll turn it over to Mike to go over some additional details.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Thank you. I do want to apologize for not being here the last time when you discussed the carts. This has been a very involved process, and unfortunately, I couldn't make it to there. I think Jim did mention that we did win an award for the Public Works Department project, so that was exciting as well. And we did just win another one for historic renovation, so we'll be sharing the news of that soon, too. So exciting things at Public Works. As Mr. Feeny mentioned, that we want to just review a few of the programmatic changes that we'll be seeing in our new collection, and starting with yard waste. Not so much how or how much you can place on the curb, but we will be going to a more every-other-week collections calendar. We will be encouraging residents to utilize existing barrels that they have now, maybe for trash that will be in excess. Once we present more barrels to them, those older barrels can be used for yard waste in the future. It will still be collected manually, so paper bags can be still used by residents, as well as trash cans. As I mentioned, collection will be every other week, starting in the spring, same timeframe that we have now, every other week through the summer, but transitioning to an every-week collection during the fall, when we observe a heavier material. There'll be a total of 21 weeks of collection through that time, and one week of Christmas tree collection. The next slide is a draft slash suggested calendar for a fiscal year. This is still something we're going to be working with the vendor to finalize, but this is a good representation. The shaded weeks in green are what we are proposing as would be collection weeks. This is looking with other communities around us, it was a similar model to other communities who have transitioned to an every-other-week and an every-week fall collection.
If I could just add to that, a reminder that this would take effect as of July. So this spring, we're still going to be on weekly collection, to the extent it gets collected weekly by our current vendor.
Thank you. As Mr. Feeny mentioned, there will be a change to bulky collections in town as well. Currently, we do accept one burnable bulky free each week, which is a couch or a chair, upholstered furniture. As we are going to an automated collection, there will not be the manual labor on the truck available to make those collections, so a separate vehicle will need to be dispatched in those events. And so an appointment and a fee will be required, which will be done directly with the vendor on their website or via phone call. There will be no change to our mattress program, which is currently a resident interface directly with that mattress collection vendor. Many items already require a fee curbside, appliances, porcelain, TVs, and electronic items, so that will continue. But as currently exists, we do accept these items at our recycle center on Ryder Street for a reduced fee, and that will continue moving forward. And on this slide is a list of what our new and current fees will be for curbside collection, but also as a reminder, a lot of these can be brought to the recycle center for reduced or free charge, especially metal items. We have a metal dumpster, and those items can be brought at no charge to the recycle For residential trash collection, as we all know, we're going to have one barrel. But in the event that this is resident finds themselves needing more capacity, we have a few solutions here. One would be an overflow bag program. Bags will be able to be purchased at local hardware stores and can be placed alongside trash on a given week for occasional overages. That's an outlet for our residents. But for those who find themselves consistently needing more capacity, we will have—they will have the ability to lease a cart, both for trash and recycling, from our vendor. And the prices proposed annually are listed on this slide for that service. As Mr. Feeny also mentioned, that we're going to be transitioning our commercial bag program into a containerized program. Currently, 65 small businesses use that—use the commercial orange bag program. And with a move to a automated containerized system, we are also transitioning the commercial program as well. Small businesses that choose to be in the town program may lease a—will be leasing a trash and recycling cart directly from the vendor at the prices listed here. They can choose to lease only recycling cart if they are not producing a lot of trash, but if they lease a trash cart, they must lease a recycling cart. And similar to the residential program, if a business finds themselves occasionally exceeding the cart, the one cart that they may have leased, orange bags will be also an outlet for the commercial businesses as well. These are really the crux of the major changes that we're—I think our residents and businesses will see in our program.
Thank you.
And then with regard to potential cart downsizing, that's something, you know, a few people have asked about. And while the board may recall that they, you know, voted previously as we set a service level, that's sort of the community-wide level, was to provide for a 65-gallon trash and recycling toter for all households. You know, in further conversation with Department of Public Works staff, we do believe there are certain parcels in the community where a trash barrel and recycling barrel of that size may present some particular unique or individual circumstances that could be deemed a hardship. So we are hopeful that after our initial deployment, we'll be able to buy some small number of the smallest possible carts that we can then deploy based on an application from a resident under certain circumstances to swap out and allow that resident to self-select a smaller-sized cart. But of course, obviously, the appropriation we have from the Capital Planning Committee is funding that initial rollout and deployment of carts. So, you know, funding will be an issue with respect to how many of those requests we may be able to process and under what circumstances. But it's just worth acknowledging now that we understand that when delivered and deployed, folks may experience some, you know, extreme hardship associated with the size of the cart, and we want to be able to provide some sort of relief option at that time to consider. So that's something we're actively looking at and hoping to be able to procure at least some number of smaller carts after deployment.
Okay. First, if I could just for one of my colleagues, maybe a move receipt and then questions or comments?
Sure. I'll move receipt.
Okay, move receipt by Mr. Diggins. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Helmut. Mr. Diggins? Any questions or comments? Sorry.
Well, I saw you—you had a question, and then I'll go after you. Let's get you.
Okay, Mr. Helmut.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you both. I believe this was communicated at a prior meeting, but just for the benefit of everyone listening tonight, can you quickly elaborate on this town's support and maintenance of the toters?
Sure. So the toters that we've chosen are warranted for 10 years, so they are quite, you know, ruggedized. They're—some of them—this particular manufacturer is deployed in New York City, in the city of Cambridge, so we know them to be reliable vendor with a good product. But we will also be not only delivering and paying for the carts, we will be maintaining them over the life of the agreement. So residents will be able to likely via the hauler's website, schedule an appointment should a wheel break off the axle or the lid snap off, and they will schedule an appointment. Someone will show up with the replacement part and repair the cart at the property.
Thank you. My other question is based on some feedback I received from the community that—I've had a few people ask, why can't the town provide a menu so that people can sort of choose their own cart size? I do very much appreciate the contemplation of the downsizing program, based on some feedback I've had from residents in East Arlington neighborhoods. I suspect this could be fairly substantial demand, just based on storage constraints in some of the two-family households, so I would very much encourage that consideration and maybe some research to drive how many of those we order. But if you could just explain for our benefit and for those asking, why it's not feasible to have a menu of choose-your-own-cart size, and why it was necessary to do just one size for everybody?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Helmut. And I think, you know, based on our discussion at April 7th, right, it was clear that there wasn't one size that fits all, but also that we were making—you know, the town was making an investment on behalf of the community and assigning what that baseline service level was going to be for households. And at that time, that given the long lead time for these items, we had to place our order into production, and it is commonplace for municipalities to provide essentially one option, unless you are a pay-as-you-throw community. Take Brookline, for example, where, you know, you'll be leasing a cart directly, and it's yours, and you can choose from any number of sizes that match your particular household. But we were sort of, you know, in our situation, and as in many other communities, you know, we're determining a community-level decision in the public interest without the ability to assign carts at the address level, especially given that these carts are going to be here for 10 years, and service levels at a particular address could change over time as households grow or as properties change hands. So this is really an investment by the community, and the community determining sort of what the best service level was. But we do acknowledge, like you noted, that there could be circumstances where it really does present a hardship, and we would like to try to provide alternative solutions, if possible.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Helmut. Mr. Diggins, and then Mr. Hurd.
Well, sure, thank you. Well, Mr. Helmut did ask the question I was going to ask one of them. That's—I'm happy that happened. But I think this will be to Mr. Radamacher, but maybe also the Town Manager. Regarding the orange bags, I mean, in the deck, in the case that you could buy 10, I mean, at $4.30, so it seems like we would be buying them from a source, but 10 at a pop. But from your presentation, I get the impression you just buy whatever number you want?
No, they're sold in rolls. Okay. But you would—obviously, you would put out however many you needed, but they are sold in a roll, not individually.
Okay, all right. You know, and there's another question, but I haven't formulated it, so I may come back.
Okay, I'll make sure to touch base with you. Mr. Hurd?
Question on the commercial aspect of it. So the requirement to get—if you get a trash can, that you also get a recycle bin, is that something that the vendor imposed on us, or is it something that we came up with?
So that's actually to align commercial collection with residential collection policies. So at the curbside, residentially, you can't just throw away trash. You also have to recycle. So this is the application of a similar principle to ensure that a business isn't taking their recycling, because we know everyone has recycling in, putting it in their trash can.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, you know, kind of applying this to my own office, where, you know, there's four residential units and three residential units, two commercial units. It's already a pretty small space where they keep the barrels. I think we have like three or four barrels and one or two recycling. You know, so if all of a sudden now everyone has a 65, you know, assuming each residential unit has a 65, each residential unit is now a 65 recycling. I have a 65 trash barrel, and all my recycling is just shredded. So I don't even—I don't use recycling in my office. It's not that I don't recycle, it's just, you know, my particular business, everything has to be shredded. And it's going to be pretty tight, and I assume in some locations, it also could be. And I don't want to write a whole policy based on, you know, my own practice, but, you know, I take my trash out like once every three weeks at work, because it's just, you know, some businesses don't generate a lot of trash. And, you know, I think in some situations, it could create nothing less than a, you know, overload of the area that people have designated for trash in larger buildings. I don't know what the rule is, what side of the building is supposed to come, transition to, you know, a dumpster or something like that, but it just, you know, it seems like in some instances, there's going to be, you know, businesses that have to use a recycle —you have to get a recycle bin that don't necessarily need it. That's my thought.
Understood. And if I could just add one thing, Mr. Hurd, it would be that when it comes to the commercial collection program, there will be the option, and we are hopeful that it will lead to some consolidation among the various businesses that share a building, to upsize to a 96-gallon cart that perhaps a number of businesses could share to help reduce with the space constraints as well as curbside clutter. And that's something we're looking at, specifically with the number of our buildings that can't accommodate dumpsters, and reducing the number of carts that they will have either to store onsite or at the curbside by upsizing a number of those carts.
And I guess the message to the public is if you have anything big to throw out, throw it out in the next five weeks, spring cleaning.
Mr. DeCoursey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Radamacher and Mr. Feeny for the presentation. I just am wondering if you can elaborate a little bit in terms of the timing of when the new toters will be available and how residents will receive them.
Sure. I'll leave that one to you.
Sure. We—they're in production currently. We are hoping to roll them out the month of June. We are working on a graphic interface right now, a GIS layer, that we'll be able to share with the community soon, so people will see the size and type of cart they will be receiving. This is a new program for us. This is the first time we're really keeping track of who has what kind of cart. So if we get any kind of feedback on that, we can make changes before the rollout as well, you know, make sure that if there were two residences and we only had one, so forth and so on, we can make the appropriate changes. But the goal is to have that data in hand so that we can provide it to a vendor for the month of June.
Okay, and they will be delivered to residences?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right. And one other thing, I think it's just important for the public now that we have the new contract. Mr. Feeny had made the presentation previously, but we're two months from the new date, so to the extent that anybody in the community was thinking of buying a new cart, don't do it. Wait a couple of months, and maybe we can get that word out. I know you were working on that, Mr. Feeny, but as much as we can in the short period of time. And I just want to elaborate a little bit on Mr. Helmut's comment. Speaking for myself, I was most concerned about where we were going on level service and what we were providing in terms of a cart for trash. I have since heard from some people as well who are concerned about space constraints, who would be interested in the smaller option, not arguing for the smaller option versus the bigger one, but just for themselves, the smaller one. So hopefully, we can offer that to people who run into that situation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sorry, one more quick question. I hate it because I know we're running short on time. But will people have the option of not taking carts? Because we—I live in a two-family. We could just stand to have one of each, you know. Is that an option?
That's an interesting question, Mr. Diggins. Of course, it is an option, but the—and we'll reiterate—the only trash and recycling that is collected curbside will be in a town-provided cart. So to not accept the cart might put you or, you know, a future occupant in a different position, though, of course. If one were not deployed, we would certainly contemplate a future request for one, if necessary.
So, thank you.
Okay. My questions all have been asked, except sort of one, along with a motion to move receipt. I'm assuming after tonight, this information perhaps will be a standalone click off the town website to see these slides and presentation. People have asked about a FAQ, frequently asked question sheet. Is that something you were—
So the FAQ is already in the works, you know, pending any other, you know, questions we receive tonight, but that's something that will be published on the town's homepage.
Okay. And myself and my colleagues have been sort of compiling the questions and forwarding them onto the Town Manager, so—and we'll continue to do that. And then I assume, you know, after that, something on ACMI or under the Town Manager update, to have something if people want to view it on cable, in terms of what the changes are. Okay. And I—we will—but right now, we're scheduled for the May 19th meeting. I think that's our only meeting in May so far, but I'll coordinate with the Town Manager on that. And if there are no further comments or questions on a motion to move receipt by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Helmut, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you. Now, do you want to get up, Mr. Radamacher, and walk around the chair and sit down again? And we'll now go to discussion and approval of the fiscal year 2026 water sewer rates. Mr. Feeny?
I'll actually defer to Mr. Radamacher.
Mr. Radamacher.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, again. I believe you have a copy of the memo presented to Jim Feeny on my recommended rates for FY '26 water and sewer. These rates are based on very similar methodology from year to year. We look at—we develop a budget for the upcoming fiscal year, and then we do an analysis of usage trends, and then we develop rates, so based on what we expect usage to be in order to cover the proposed budget. As I state in this memo, we take into account capital funding projects, equipment purchases, the DPW project, which is partially funded with water and sewer rates. And for this year, the proposed combined water and sewer rate is an average of 4.47%. Now, this is a bit higher than last year, which I think we're just over 3%. We are seeing a decline in consumption over the past few years. I think in one year, I would attribute it totally to a very wet summer. We had rain every weekend two years ago, so there was no real need for irrigation. Last year, we had a very wet spring, but a dry summer. I would have expected it to be a little higher than it was, but it was not. We still were under our projections last year. So based on the methodology of looking at the past five years and throwing out a high and throwing out a low, we're still seeing a trend in that average consumption trending downward slightly. So at an increase of about 3% in our budget and a decrease in consumption of approximately a percent, when you do the math and you work in a few other factors, that's what would result in the 4.5% recommended rate increase. Now, I also note on this memo that I'm late this year in presenting these recommendations to the board. So we are currently using water right now that will be billed in July, so it would not necessarily be correct to be changing rates now for water that was already used and would be billed in July. So I'm proposing that the first bill that these rates would take in effect would be the October bill, which accounts for June, July, and August usage. So that way, folks will know what the water costs that they're using at the time they're using it. It—that—I still presented the information as though it was a solid year of rate increase, but so what it really—what it really will affect was that first bill in July. There'll be no rate increase. I would assume the same average bill as last year, which is also on this memo. And then for the three remaining bills, the average monthly bill would take effect. And as I stated here, if you calculated a full year at these rates, it would be, for the average Arlington home, $1,223, but if you backed out that first bill, it would be closer to $1,212 for the year. So more of an average— So more of an average of a four percent increase over the entire year if you took that, that first bill into play. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, so, so, we, we, when you just look at the numbers, we, we, someone will say, it seems like the rates are going up by a hundred and fifty percent. You know, uh, and, and I understand partially your explanation that because water usage has gone down, the rates are going up, and so the, the psychology of that is almost like, well, I'm being penalized, meaning for using less water. You know, and so then we are incurring costs, we, that we have to spread over a lower water usage, right? Is that why the percentage, the rate is going up?
We, we, our costs are fixed.
Yeah.
Right? Al- almost regardless of how much water is used, we are, we have an assessment from the MWR for water and sewer. We have labor costs and we have capital costs. So, um, it, it, it is true, the, the, as consumption goes down, rates are gonna go up because you still have to make that baseline revenue.
Right, right. I understand. You know, and, and I'm asking so I can explain to folks too. And, and so the, the average that you use here, it seems like it's on the high end of the zero to fifteen, we, per, we, um, one hundred cubic feet, right? Because you have sixty, um, a hundred or CCF per year?
Yes.
And that's the high end of the zero to fifteen, right?
No, that's for the year, so that's each quarter. If each quarter you use fifteen, over the course of the year, you would use sixty. And that's what we see actual usage trends in the town of Arlington.
Oh, so that is, so yes, 'cause I saw that as the, as the high end of that quarterly, 'cause, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's a data we get. We see that, uh, the MWR compiles and we see that's an actual average.
'Cause where I was going with that, this is my last question, is that the, the people are using less water and the rates are going up. There is a point where you're still better off because you, you're using less water.
Correct.
And, and, and so the incentive could be to continue doing that and feel that you'll be rewarded, meaning for, for using less water. Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. DeCoursey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Radamacher. I, I just wanna clarify something. So a year ago, we had an increase between twenty-four and twenty-five of three point oh five percent. But that started with the July bill. So, eh, from the consumer's point of view, you were paying four bills at the increased rate. And, and this year, from what you said, the July bill, which is paid in August, will be at the same rate. The increase will go into effect for the bills to be paid November, February, and May. So if you annualize the bills, and I understand that the first bill of the year, that the read date is May thirty-first, it's, it's for spring, springtime usage. The actual cost to the consumer for fiscal twenty-six is less than four and a half percent. It's like three point four percent or something. And, and I think we can spell that out a little bit because it goes up beginning with that second bill, but it, it's, you're not getting any increase. Whereas a year ago, in the prior years, you were getting it right from the beginning of the year. And I think that's, you know, we get up above three percent, three and a half percent, we were concerned about, um, cost. But I think that's a way to look at it, um, in terms of what people are gonna be paying.
I, I agree. Uh, it, it's just difficult 'cause the actual rate that's published will show.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right? But your, your, um, explanation is accurate. If you average it throughout the year, it is less than four and a half percent.
Yeah, and, and the only assumption there is you're using water uniformly through the year. Might be more, might be less in the spring, who knows? But, uh, okay, thank you. And I think to the extent we can do that, that's, I, I, I think that's gonna, that'll be helpful, just explaining the difference in terms of how that's being rolled out.
Mr. Helmut.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move approval, uh, for the proposals before us. And also, um, agree with my colleague, Mr. DeCoursey, that I think it would be really prudent to, whenever the public has noticed about this, to, to include a very clear statement of that, of that actual pocketbook impact, as well as the, as the necessary and appropriate disclosure of the actual rate increase.
Second. Second by Mr. Hurd. Um, any further discussion or comments? If not, on a motion to approve by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Radamacher.
Thank you.
See you again soon. Uh, we now have the consent agenda, the minutes of the meetings, April seventh, twenty twenty-five. A request for contractor drain layers license, LS Fitzgerald out of Milton, Mass. Acceptance of funds from our deputy town manager, Christine Bonjono. A request for the annual Greek festival on June fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, twenty twenty-five, for a four-day special one-day beer and wine license, as well as the one-way designation of Burton Street, along with the closing of Acton Street. Arlington Soapbox Derby Local Race on June fourteenth, with the rain date of June fifteenth. Joseph Bar Race Director. Renewal outdoor dining and sidewalk cafe applications. For Burismo and Galians, a request for a special one-day beer and wine license on May twenty-fourth at Robbins Memorial Town Hall for a private event by Nicholas Matucci. Apologize, I didn't say that correctly. A request for a special one-day, one-day beer and wine license on May seventeenth at the Jason Russell Lawn and Museum for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth Lawn Festival for the Arlington Historical Society from Robert Brazil. Also a request, special one-day beer and wine license, May twenty-fifth at Robbins Memorial Town Hall for a private event by Juliana McCorkle. A request for a special one-day beer and wine license, May eighth, May nineteenth, May twenty-ninth, June ninth, at Mill Cafe for wine or whiskey tastings by Jen Rothenberg, Arlington Community Education. And a request for the Arlington High School Ice Cream fundraiser for Dana Faber Cancer Institute on May seventeenth from eleven AM to four PM at the Cyrus Allen Art Museum from the Arlington High School Scoops Club. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
By Mr. DeCoursey. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hurd. Um, any discussion or comments, Mr. DeCoursey?
Yeah, I, I'm, sorry, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I had one minor change in the minutes, and it's in my new business, um, where the, we relayed the meeting with the MBTA and, and just a clarification on Mr. Eng, the reference to Mr. Eng. Um, and I'll, I'll bring that up with, with, uh, Ms. Marr.
And Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, so, I, I hate to be a hard blank on this one regarding the, the wine and beer license for the Greek festival, but the letter from Officer Rato, mean, um, I found troublesome. Mean, um, uh, mean, the, 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 I'm just really bothered by it. I mean, if, uh, it, it seems like a violation that's been going on for a while, for one thing. I mean, and there's several, uh, a couple at least, meaning, so, I, I'd like to understand, like, how it is that they felt that it was okay, you know, to have that cart, you know, in the first place. You know, and, and for how long it's been going on. I mean, uh, and, and then, and to find out what they plan to do, because as Officer Rato said, if they wanna sell things other than beer and wine, then they need to get all alcohol license. I mean, so if they wanna do that, then, then ask us for it. And also, I mean, let's understand what happened and then what they're gonna do to stop it from happening. You know, because, I, I don't know, I just, I can't completely verbalize, I mean, the bad feeling that I have from this. Normally, I'm pretty easygoing about these things, I mean, but it is alcohol and they're coming to us for permission to do it. And if something were to go wrong, I mean, then we would have, we'd be accountable for it. And then someone looked at this, these minutes or the, the letter from Officer Rato, and we just kinda did it. They did say, what were you thinking? And I would go, I don't know what we're thinking. You know, I think we weren't thinking, but I'm thinking about it. And I would like us to, like, at least have them in, I mean, to talk to us about this. I mean, so I don't know if it means that we don't do the license now, we wait and have them in on the, on the nineteenth, I mean, or we just don't do the license, I mean, or if my colleagues are fine with doing the license, um, we'll do the license.
Or we, we do the license as we've done in the past, but we make it very clear to them that it's, it's always been, um, stated that the alcohol sales have to be consumed in a contained area under the tent. We've never given approval. Unless I hear differently tonight, or not given approval for this one. I don't mean to minimize, let's say, the wandering cart. That, um, if you want, we can, um, make it clear. If we can approve it tonight conditionally, um, but make sure we communicate to them that, uh, that unless any of my other colleagues disagree, that, um, they cannot continue with this unauthorized practice that we've never, um, approved of, um, of the roving cart selling alcohol. It has to be contained in one place and it has to be under the tent. That's what we've given the license. Do you think that would cover it? I mean, we could still have them in on the nineteenth.
Yeah, I, I'd like to have a talk with them because I think, I mean, there's just something going on here where it seems like it's a disregard, I mean, for, I mean, the, the rules. You know, 'cause I, this is not, I think, an easy thing that happened. I mean, a cart didn't disappear, you know, and I know I'm, uh, that's a bit of a hyperbole, but, but I think there's some real intent behind this, and sometimes the attitude is like, well, we'll ask forgiveness. We will, and then we'll ask forgiveness. It's not something that I like to encourage by, by any stretch, you know. Uh, and so we can do the approval, but then let's have them in, I mean, to talk with us about it.
Just the May nineteenth meeting, we do have the trash. We do have other things on that, and we do have town meeting. So if we have them in, it'll just be a discussion, but I, I guess that's the way, if my colleagues didn't agree with that. Well, Mr. Helmut?
I share Mr. Diggins' concerns, you know, and I think that, I mean, this does strike me that this is an enforcement question primarily. Uh, another option would be, um, I mean, I'm not opposed to talking to them. I actually think that that would be productive. I'd like to hear from them, why it happened and how they plan to, to avoid this, um, happening in the, in the first place. But it's also, you know, something that our police department can and should enforce. Because whatever, if we grant the license tonight, the expectation is that this would not be permissible. You know, I mean, first of all, as, as the chair said. So, you know, the board could vote this and direct the town manager, um, to communicate i- in, in a very firm manner with the organizers, uh, the expectation that this won't be happening in, in notice of, of the level of enforcement we intend to, to accomplish with liquor license.
And just to say, we, it's a request that we have them come to talk with us. We, you, as chair, we will determine, I mean, what we have time for on the agenda.
I'll confer with the vice chair.
We can certainly have, have a conversation.
At the very least, we will ask the manager and Attorney Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for clarity, the board's actions, your discretion, Madam Chair, but might I suggest that perhaps this item is removed from the consent agenda? Consent agenda will be voted separately, uh, and then have this, if there's a conditional vote that the board wants to take on item number seven, that'd be a separate vote.
Okay. Is that amendable to you, Mr. DeCoursey?
Yeah, that.
Along with your amendment to the minutes on the Thursday? And, Mr. Hurd, that's okay? So I need further discussion on amendment, on the motion to approve four, five, seven through fourteen by Mr. DeCoursey, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all those.
Madam Chair, just a quick question. I believe you meant, uh, eight through fourteen and to omit seven.
I'm sorry. So to approve four through six, eight through fourteen. Thank you, Mr. Helmut. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. And now we go to agenda item seven. Is there a motion for conditional approval by Mr. Diggins?
Yeah, still moved. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, but could we elaborate what the condition is?
That we, um, stipulate that we communicate with them that they need to follow the rules regarding not having a cart and not serving, you know, anything other than beer and license. I mean, and, uh, I, I guess I won't say, you know, that we meet with them because we need to decide whether we're gonna do that or not. So is, I, is that appropriate, Madam Chair, that we?
Yes, Mr. Helmut?
Um, it, subject to the approval, Mr. Diggins, we could, we could also make the condition only the communication of that, but also require them to respond in writing to the town manager. Um, and the decision would be that their response is acceptable to the town manager and to the chair.
You should've done the.
We're a good team.
Any further questions or comments? If not, on a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Helmut with the outlined, um, steps for enforcement for agenda item seven, the annual Greek festival. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. We now go to appointments. Agenda item fifteen, Arlington Commission of Arts and Culture Grants Committee. Shereen Bellamy, term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Is Shereen here or in Zoom?
On Zoom.
Okay. If you could promote her. Is Ms. Bellamy there?
Looks like she declined the promotion.
Oh, uh, Ms. Bellamy, Bellamy, we're trying to get you in. You need to accept. No.
They're declining to be promoted to a panelist, but Ms. Bellamy, if you would like to be appointed, you have to accept the invitation to become a panelist.
Okay, what we can do is.
Yeah, can send her a message.
Yes, we're gonna send a message. Ms. Bellamy, we need you to accept the invitation to become a panelist so that we can, um, zoom you into the meeting. We're going to go on and come back to that agenda item, to agenda item sixteen, the Farmers Market Permit, a premise alcohol permit, on behalf of Arlington Brewing Company, Peter Caradona. Just state your name and affiliation, even though I kind of already did.
Sure. Uh, my name is Peter Caradona. Uh, I live at eighty-six Riverview Avenue, uh, in Waltham, Massachusetts, and I'm the head of finance and sales for Arlington Brewing. And, uh, so, yeah, so we're looking for a, a license to sell our beer, uh, in four packs at the Arlington Farmers Market. As you may or may not be aware, uh, this is the first time that Farmers Markets, um, it's, yeah, exactly. It's, um, we're able to sell our beer at the Farmers Market, so we're looking forward to, um, sharing that with, you know, with the folks at the, that attend the Farmers Market.
Yes, it's exciting. Um, Mr. Hurd?
Move approval.
Move approval by Mr. Hurd. Is there a second? Mr. Diggins? Any questions? No? Um, on a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Diggins, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Look forward to seeing you. I'm glad you're taking advantage of that opportunity, so.
Yeah, no, we're excited. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We'll now go for approval on all alcohol license. Jovan Entropis?
Sorry, Mrs. Mahan. It looks as though that they accepted the invitation. Would you like to still table until after this discussion or?
Um, okay, we're, we're gonna do, you can still sit if you wanna, you wait, okay. Yes, we'll, we'll go back to agenda item fifteen.
Yeah, you know, it's a little confusing. Sorry, everyone.
Ms. Bellamy?
Hello.
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 Good to hear you. Um, if you could just state your, oh, there you are. Good to see you. Um, if you could just state your name again for the record and, um, a brief description of yourself and, and your interest in the Arts and Culture Grants Committee.
Yes. So hello, everyone. My name is Shereen Bellamy. Um, I'm interested in the Arts and Culture, uh, Grants Committee because I'm interested in the arts as just a fun passion slash hobby of mine. Um, professionally, I'm a developer advocate, so most of my work, um, has to do with, uh, technology education and curating the experience around that. Um, so, yeah. So I'm interested in joining the committee because, um, I just feel like I want to be more involved in the arts that's happening more closer to me. Um, I've been a resident of Arlington since about twenty twenty-one. Um, and I feel like, uh, my relationship with arts around here has been just like stumbling into activities. And so I think it'd be really cool to be on the grants committee for it and just be more well-educated and lend a hand with my, uh, my background.
Thank you. Um, my colleagues, Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to, uh, very gratefully move approval, and I think it's just wonderful that you've been a resident of town for just twenty twenty-one, but you wanna get involved. That's the secret sauce for Arlington, that people see something that they like and wanna get involved with and keep making it great and better. So thank you, and I look forward to seeing what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Enthusiastic second, and I'm really impressed by your, your, your CV. And, and, um, I'll say the ACAC, um, um, Grants Committee, Committee has a real interesting bunch of people on it. So I think you're gonna really enjoy working with them. And let's see if you can get like a hundred eighteen percent increase in the grants to get to match the hundred percent. A hundred eighteen percent increase in attendance that you got, you know, with your other ventures. So thank you very much.
I'll try it.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? If not on a motion? If not on a motion by Mr. Helmoth, seconded by Mr. Diggins, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Welcome, Ms. Bellamy. We look forward to seeing you in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, thank you. We will go to agenda item 17. Havali? Indian cuisine, 464 Mass Ave.
Good evening, John Leoni, representing Jovan Enterprises. I'm doing business as Havali Indian Cuisine. They're in the old Tango space. They've been open for a couple of weeks now.
Yeah.
And we've applied for our, they've applied for their alcohol license and all alcohol license. With me is Ram-
Raman.
I can never say her name properly. Rwindas and Ramanjeet. Ramanjeet is going to be the alcohol manager. She has taken the tips course. She has some experience in alcohol service and restaurant management, not lifelong, but she does have some, and her husband has long-time experience in the restaurant business, 24 years. We've also provided you, as part of our application process, with the alcohol service policy, which they will be making all of their employees read and sign before they can start, and they do intend to strictly enforce that. We know, I've explained to them Arlington's rules and how strict this board is with service of two drinks and then food, and no underage alcohol service at all is allowed, and also the penalties that go along with that. So, we respectfully ask that the board, if we have any questions, will gladly answer them, otherwise we ask for your vote.
Mr. Hurd?
Note that you don't, we don't have the two-drink rule anymore. We repealed that, but-
We do. Oh, great.
Move approval.
It's in my state of the town. Of course, yeah, Mr. Hurd. Mr. Helmoth?
I'll second that and say, I think from a public health point of view, it's still a good idea, but it is no longer a requirement.
Okay. And who is, and I'm not going to say this correctly, so I want you to tell me how to say your name correctly. Ramanjeet Karupal?
It's Ramanjeet.
Can you say your name correctly, so I say it right?
Ramanjeet Karupal. Yeah, it's right.
Okay, and so, you're in the former, did you say Tango site?
Yes.
Yeah.
If there's anything either two of you would like to say, or you learned at council, we look forward to having you in Arlington. We know how difficult it is in the restaurant business, and your restaurant becomes sort of an extension of your family, because you're there so much. And we know how difficult it is, you know, to run a restaurant business, but we also know all the hard work you're going to put in and how rewarding it can and will be, and that you are mindful of, especially around the alcohol rules. But what's contained in here, you obviously have the experience and you're dedicated to running a good business, so I'm really excited about that. Wish you nothing but luck and good success. On a motion to move approval by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Helmoth, any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you so much. And we'll now go for agen, go for, agenda item 18, for approval common Vic license. KD Rush, doing business at Rush Bowls at 307 Broadway.
Rush Bowl.
We have Stephen Douglas and Bedros Kaya, perhaps.
Madam Chair, just if I could, it's on the agenda as a common Vic license. It's actually a food vendor license, and the application reflects that. It was just incorrectly added to the agenda as a common Vic.
And that's okay?
Just wanted to note that. That's okay, yeah.
Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just introduce yourselves and-
Well, sure. I'm Bedros Kaya. My partner and Steve from Waltham, both of us. We would like to open an acai bowl and smoothie shop right next to my pizza shop. I own the Brickstone Pizza also, and she is joining me, so we'd like to open something new, acai bowl. It's not, I don't see anywhere around here, but that's a new challenge for us. We already started building, but we haven't finished permits and, you know, inspections yet. Steve, I think-
No. I'm Friday night, Brickstone night, so I'm really excited to, now see I can pop and look over what's next door. For my colleagues?
I don't want to make every motion approval. I'll move approval.
Mr. Hurd, is there a second?
I'm a big Brickstone guy, too. I go on Mondays before my Monday diet kicks in and get a baking calzone.
I have a question, though.
Yes.
Even though it says food vendor, right, because is that because we don't have, like, seating inside?
That's correct.
It's not common Vic, so, as I said.
That's correct.
But are we, are we able to add outdoor seating in the summer months?
You can apply for outdoor seating.
Okay. So, just contact the office and be back on another agenda. You get to see us a lot of times. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Decorse? Any questions, comments?
Just-
Mr. Helmoth?
We're glad you're expanding. Thank you for choosing Arlington for your business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
From your Brickstone, soon-to-be Rush Bowl fans-
I think I mentioned to your two sons that work there?
My three sons work here.
Three sons, and so I said to them, "I'll come in to get my calzone on Mondays and my smoothie on the rest of the week."
Sounds good. Thank you.
Motion to approve with housekeeping changes on the license by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Decorse. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Good to see you.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And then we go to agenda item 19, Transportation Advisory, TAC, recommendations for North Union parking request. We know who you are, but if you could just-
Yeah, Scott Smith, 39 Hammer's Street, member of TAC. Well, the immediate rec, so this is for parking on North Union, where you have this area, you have a playing field, you have Thompson School, and when there are games at the playing field, the street can get pretty parked up. So, we have a very short-term recommendation, which isn't really a change to the traffic rules at all, because parking is already illegal within 20 feet of an intersection. Now, it's basically simply to daylight the intersection at Norcross, where we do see often vehicles parked way too close, and this is just putting up some signs to reflect the current rules. Longer term, now back in, pause, is there any questions on that? Okay. So, I think that that's the vote we're asking for tonight. Longer term, I think we want to start a dialogue with the residents and the rec department about what to do longer term. And, you know, for one-side parking, or the, you know, we have this whole process for butter-driven changes, which we did in 2017, and the link to that is included in our report. Haven't seen particular pressure from public safety on this yet. So, we, you know, vote the immediate signage, and then I think we'll work with the rec department and the butters to pursue the longer-term process.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I'll do it, so that we save-
Mr. Diggins, yes.
I want to be known as a pushover.
Yeah. So, I will move acceptance, I mean, and that we adopt the recommendations for the short-term solutions.
Okay. Is there a second?
I keep doing the seconds, but-
Mr. Helmoth?
And I just want to express my appreciation for, as usual, the really thoughtful and clear memo. I think the long-term, the thoughts on the long-term solution are really right on, and a lot goes into that, so I look forward to seeing where that goes.
Thanks. And I do want to thank you for moving forward, getting out the public information to the public, meeting with residents and the recreation department, and we'll certainly be watching that. And I think the TAC Transportation Advisory Committee has done such a phenomenal job dealing with so many different residents throughout the town, and sometimes parking traffic issues on an easy sell, and there's a lot of emotions and passions. And I know that Mr. Smith and Mr. Stube and others, we're very grateful for what you, how you've represented the town, not only finding the solutions, but getting the word out. Appreciate that. On a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Helmoth, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Good to see you. New business, Ms. Mar?
No new business, thank you.
Attorney Cunningham?
No new business, thank you.
Mr. Town Manager?
No new business, thank you.
Mr. Decorse?
No new business.
Mr. Diggins?
Just quickly, you may notice you have these packets of cards made from Neelu, Neelu, I'm confusing, that's her last name, I'm sorry, I haven't looked that up lately, but she is the woman who did the sidewalk placards, I mean, or paintings, I mean, and so, I was at the Beer Garden on Saturday before last, I mean, and I got a couple of stacks, I mean, complete sets, and she offered, you know, to give those to my colleagues, I mean, and so, I recommend, I mean, that you hang on to them. I think they will become collector's items at some point, because I think Neelu is just such an amazing artist, and I think she's not recognized as much as she should be, so just in the short term, I think someone is going to realize just how good she is. But I think you hang, someone has these sets 250 years from now, you know, they could really be worth a lot, so, but right now, they're worth nothing, I mean, so I'm not violating the ethics rules, I mean, so, that's all.
Priceless.
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Mr. Hurd?
I just want to, as we got through the weekend, thank everybody that was involved in the 250 celebration, from town staff, volunteers, and our incredible public services. You know, we, a couple of years ago, chose to have a large event on Easter, knowing that it could create some hardships for some of the people that were involved, but the event was amazing, was very well-attended by the public, and I do want to thank everyone that gave up their time in order to make that event work. It was really, it was an awesome weekend. We had, you know, I talked to people from California, from Connecticut, that were coming into town and asking questions about town, so it really was an opportunity for us to showcase our amazing town. You know, sometimes we are, get forgotten in the April 19th crowd behind Lexington and Concord, but, you know, I think we really had an opportunity to step up and show Arlington's history. So, I do want to thank everyone that attended, everyone was involved. Was a little disappointed with some of our invited dignitaries that didn't bother to show up. I know there's not as many cameras in Arlington as there was in Lexington and Concord, but, you know, we have been, you know, a lot of people had been working on this for a really long time, and it would have been nice to see some of the local, in state, you know, where the governor lives in town, we have a lot of federal legislators, legislators who come through Arlington, you know, when they're running for reelection, and, you know, it would have been nice to see some support for the town and not just Lexington and Concord. But that said, I do, I want to thank everyone that did come, and, you know, thank everybody that was involved.
I want to thank you, Mr. Hurd, for, it's been about a two-year process, even though it was a one-weekend event, or a week-long event, excuse me, it wasn't one weekend, it was at least a week-long event, and really appreciate all the extra time that you've, you know, taken away from your family and, as well as your job, on behalf of the board, and being able to coordinate everything. And was really just surprised, and one of the things that I had to cut out of my speech was also the work that you and the committee did, sort of a just-in-case scenario, in case something went awry. Thankfully, you didn't have to deploy any of that, but it seemed like you all were ready for just about everything, and sometimes a lot of the behind-the-scenes planning, which I had nothing to do with, and you certainly did, thankfully, never has to be used, but I'm glad you took that extra step and put in those extra hours. So, thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mr. Helmoth?
No new business, thank you.
Business. And I know you can't wait to get down here, my state of the town, don't get me started. I'll take a motion from one of my colleagues to adjourn that we reconvene down at town meeting, and our adjournment, we will remain in open session, and our adjournment will coincide with the adjournment of the annual town meeting. Move by-
Still moved.
By Mr. Decorse, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hurd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. See you at 8:00 p.m. at town meeting.